My wife wants me to stop and she says they're crazy.
Yeah. I have all your work done. I'm impressed.
Do you do one of the fancy ones? It's a the.
We bought a.
Did you set it up yet?
By the time we got it upstairs.
There's mine.
You got it put together and calibrated and everything set up?
Did your deadlifts is pretty much. She says. I know, she started questioning it. So. 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 So.
Good evening, welcome to the New Kent County Planning Commission meeting for April 21st, 2025. If you don't mind, if you can stand, stand for a moment of silence and then pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
Mr. Roder, can you conduct a roll call, please?
Ms. Townsend?
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Miss Thomas?
Mr. LaRochelle? Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Reverend Hathaway?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here. Thank you, Mr. Roder, we have a quorum. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Since we have two sets of minutes to approve, we'll take them one at a time. So first, February 18th, 2025, regular meeting. Does anyone have any corrections?
Mr. Chairman, on the second page, bottom paragraph, third line from the bottom, because this may be too restrictive and that staff is four looking for, so I think that first four should go away.
Yes. Okay. Yes, sir.
I would move that we adopt the minutes for February 18th, 2025, unless we hear from other, for other changes, but hearing none, I would suggest we adopt it.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes with the one correction and Mr. LaRochelle move. Mr. Roder, can you poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
And Mr. Davis?
Aye. Minutes are approved as amended. Next are the minutes for the March 26th, 2025 joint work session with the Board of Supervisors. Does anyone have any corrections there? If, I do have the first page, under section three, the second paragraph, second lined, the New Kent 2025 Conference Plan comma, says ads drafted by the Steering Committee. I would, I would change that actually, including input from the Steering Committee. The Steering Committee didn't draft it itself.
Mr. Chairman, hearing no other changes or revisions, I'd make a motion that we adopt, or yes, we adopt the March 26th, 2025 joint work session meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have a motion to approve the March 26th, 2025 joint work session minutes with the correction. Mr. Roder, could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Upstain.
Ms. Johnson? Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas? Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Minutes are approved for the March 26th meeting. Next, we'll move on to the citizen comment period. Comments are limited to those on planning related issues that are not scheduled for a public hearing later on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there are none.
There are none, thank you. So, being no one has signed up for the citizen comment period, we'll move on to the next No presentations, so, thanks. Next, unfinished business. I believe we have no unfinished business, correct? And now we're on to new business, which is a consideration of PC-05-25, it's an exception request for Gary Moran from section 98-1069A4 regarding architectural standards of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division, again here this evening to provide an overview of an exception request submitted by Mr. Gary Moran pursuant to section 98-1071 of the county code to waive provisions which prohibit the use of large work area doors or open bays facing the public right-of-way in portions of properties located within the county's Commerce Corridor Overlay District. So the exception request itself relates to the proposed construction of a new one-story wood frame structure to be used for storage in relation to an existing commercial use, a retail shopping establishment, as can be seen on this graphic here, located 18901 Eltham Road. The subject site is a corner lot located at the intersection of Eltham and Farmers, and again pursuant to section 98-1071A4 of the county code, the Commerce Corridor Overlay District design standards do prohibit large work area doors or open bays from facing public rights of way within the overlay district. So again, the applicant Gary Moran is requesting an exception from this restriction to allow the installation of a single nine-by-twelve bay door facing Farmers. Farmers Drive on the proposed structure in order to provide, or accommodate user-friendly, all-weather loading and unloading activities to and from that proposed storage building, which can be seen here, all other elements of which do comply with the Commerce Corridor design regulations. So in staff's analysis of the exception request, it was found that by virtue of the subject site being both a corner lot and abutted on its rear by the Washington Burgess Inn, the subject site is constrained somewhat in its ability to accommodate orienting the proposed structure in such a way where the bay door would not face any sort of right-of-way. They really only have the options of Farmers or Eltham. There's no access from the rear where they could face the door away completely from either. So that is a sort of site constraint, which is a key consideration of the exception criteria. In addition, staff does support orienting the bay door towards Farmers as opposed to Eltham, since again, Eltham is the right-of-way from which the actual district boundary does extend. And then finally, in order to further screen the bay door from view, the applicant is proposing as part of their plan to provide landscaping at both the southern portion of the site, along Farmers Drive, kind of in the bottom right corner there, as well as in the northern portion of the site, along Eltham Road. So ultimately, staff did find this exception request to satisfy all of the exception criteria outlined in the code and is ultimately recommending approval, but staff's available for any questions or concerns you might have, and would also point out the applicant, Mr. Moran, is here tonight in case anyone had any questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Moran, would you like to speak, or?
If I need to. I think Patrick pretty much outlined everything.
Okay, if you don't have anything prepared to speak, I mean, we might have some questions for you.
It's gonna be clean, it's not gonna be a tacky door, and like he was saying, it's kind of the only place to put a door and make that building user-friendly. And it's not ever gonna be another dumpy car lot. That's about all.
Thanks, sir, we may have a few questions.
Okay.
Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant or staff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Silva, if you don't mind, forgive me, but if you would remind me, the, it's, bay doors are not generally permitted within the Commerce Corridor District, and I believe loading zones are not permitted on the, on the front. Is that correct?
So, loading zones are not permitted in what would be the, the, kind of, the, rather, the design criteria of the Commerce Corridor Overlay Zone requires that loading not take place within the primary front area, and again, the building is oriented in its entrance towards Eltham.
Okay.
So staff did find that it satisfied that, that loading zone criteria. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement, and just for the consideration of the other commissioners and you, sir. I do not find anything really objectionable with the exception requests, but I would suggest and promote that there should be some type of mitigation to be explored in addition to the landscaping to promote and, and be in the spirit of the Commerce Corridor District. That could be into architectural style, a little more architectural styling of the building, or screening of, I think there's a dumpster pad that will eventually probably be used out there, something that gives a little more spirit to it. And I think this is the perfect, uh, perfect opportunity to do that, since once established, it'd be hard to reestablish anything to complement the area for the commercial, commercial corridor district. So that's just a segment I have, and I'd just leave it to the commissioners for discussion.
Well, we'll have some commentary as well, I guess, the, the predicament, I guess, of this site in and of itself, fronting on two roads, as it were, and then, then the rear is actually in view of their neighbor. So for three, 60 degrees, it certainly needs to be presentable, obviously, to everyone involved, those going down the road, and then the people that are, you know, working, or the business that is located right behind it, it's just a, maybe a little bit of an oddity to have that parcel behind it wrap around the entire, this entire parcel. Again, I'm, I'm not really thinking there's, I guess, is a primary frontage defined in our code as well, or is that?
Yes, with respect to sort of any specific considerations of, for her site design.
That has two frontages, and, and one's considered primary over to the other.
Right, yes.
I guess, based on the ones being arterial road, or, or, I guess, a four-lane.
It generally has to do with the way the building is oriented, the, the front entrance of the building, towards which right-of-way that, that is kind of, is oriented, as well as, I believe for some criteria, it may also be related to which side has the longer frontage, but that doesn't factor into any of the Commerce Corridor criteria.
Yeah, and I'm, and I think personally, right now, I'm, I'm fine with it, the Eltham, I mean, the Eltham Road being that primary frontage, and I think that's probably the best, best decision. Any other questions of the applicant or staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion. In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC-05-25 to forward the exception request by Gary Moran to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Schmidt. So we have a motion for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for PC-05-25, exception request for Gary Moran. Mr. Roder, can you poll the commissioners?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Upstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Motion passes for PC-05-25 with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Silva, thank you, Mr. Moran. Now, moving on to public hearings, we have two public hearings tonight, and I'm gonna turn it over to the public hearing chair, Ms. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two public hearings on, on the agenda. Each of those has been properly advertised. We, we will open the, the public hearing with staff report, followed by any, any other presentations, and then we will move on to commissioners' questions, and then finally, it will be opened up to anyone that wishes to speak. When, if, if anyone wishes to speak, they'll, they'll come to the podium, they'll state their name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you will have seven minutes. Following that, we will have, we will entertain any other comments, and then the public hearing will be closed. I'll now open the first public hearing for the New Kent County 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update. Mr. Silva?
Thank you very much, and again, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Silva, Principal Planner with the Department of Community Development's Planning Division, here this evening to provide a brief introduction to the Comprehensive Plan Docket, Comprehensive Plan Update Docket item, before turning it over to Todd from EPR to give the presentation on the proposed update. So I did just want to take a moment, I would be remiss if I did not mention that bringing this proposed update forward for consideration is a very exciting step forward for the county, and is the result of the sustained effort of many individuals and organizations, as well as both professional and public collaboration over a period of almost three years, from late fall 2021 to the present. So the plan you'll all will be considering this evening is the distillation of a number of professional studies, data analysis, and citizen feedback that reflects the widely-held desire of the citizens of New Kent County to maintain the county's attractive rural character whilst also providing opportunities for economic development and well-managed growth. So I did also want to extend a special thanks to the consulting team from EPR, who were invaluable in the process of analysis, with respect to all of the different plan topic areas, as well as in the creation of the plan document itself, as well as to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee members, some of whom are here this evening, whose leadership and feedback throughout the update process was absolutely critical in crafting the plan before you tonight for consideration, and finally, of course, to all the residents of New Kent County who put their time and care into the consideration of and feedback on the plan during the extensive public outreach process. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Todd Gordon from EPR, who will tell you a little bit more about the plan.
Thanks very much. I'm Todd Gordon with EPR, and it has been our role to assist county staff and the appointed steering committee to assemble a plan meeting state requirements and meeting your own local desires for planning for the future. And, there we go. As Mr. Silva mentions, we owe a great deal of thanks to the Plan Steering Committee. They were appointed by the Board of Supervisors to oversee this planning effort and did wonderful work over a long course of study, participating in public engagement and reviewing plan drafts and so on, as well as to staff, who have been wonderful partners in creating this document. You all have already seen a, one brief presentation about this when you had your joint work session with the Board of Supervisors, so I will try to not, not speak for too long. But we want to remember that Virginia law requires all county, cities, and towns to adopt a comprehensive plan as a guide to long-range decision-making. And New Kent County's last comprehensive plan full update was in 2012. There had been some minor updates since. You also went through a process of adopting a strategic plan, which was finished in 2021, which set a community vision and some broad goals, and that became the foundation for this plan. We might also consider where you go next. This plan includes a list of items that are called tactics, which are meant to be to-do list items to execute the county's vision for the future, and so that might come about in revisions to zoning, or in individual departmental plans for the future, departments like utilities, and parks, and schools, and others. It might also be reflected in the budgeting decisions that are made, as well as the land use approvals that you make pretty much every time you meet. This is all necessary because of population growth. No surprise to you that New Kent County has grown pretty dramatically for decades now. The current county population is a bit over 27,000 people, and if you put stock in the demographic estimates of the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia, which is the official state demographer, they forecast a population in 2050 of a little over 36,000. Not surprising, given your position along a major roadway between two major metropolitan areas in the Tidewater and Richmond area, and the fact that you are a very attractive place to live makes people want to come. But what does all that mean? If you do welcome 9,000 new residents by 2050, at an average, your existing average of 2.63 persons per household, that's 3,400 plus new homes over that period, which would be a continued dramatic increase. So that's important to pay attention to. This plan was strongly based in public input. We supplied a lot of analysis and a lot of discussion with the Steering Committee, but we spent a lot of time talking to the public. This is their home, and their desires for the future are paramount. We had three major phases of public engagement. The first, early in the process, was a bit of a kickoff. We also conducted a community survey at that time, so gave people an opportunity to come meet in person or to do a survey on their own time. In the middle of the process, we held a series of interactive meetings and another interactive mapping survey, which allowed people to weigh in on transportation and land use map issues. And then at the end of the process, when there were some draft products to look at, we held an open house again, soliciting feedback from the public. So in all these ways, in person, online, via social media, mailed postcards on, on two occasions, phase two and phase three, mailed postcards to every address in the county to try to let people know that there were opportunities to be involved in this process. The outline of the plan looks like this. It's in, it's roughly 100 pages long, it's organized into 10 chapters that cover typical comprehensive plan fare, the demographic analysis of the county, discussion of economy, housing, natural resources, utilities, public facilities, which includes parks, schools, et cetera, transportation and land use, probably the, the mediest of the chapters, and an implementation chapter. There are also some appendices to the document with additional maps, the future land use matrix. matrix, which we'll talk about a little more, lists of proposed transportation projects, and a summary of VDOT's six-year improvement plan for the county. So each chapter follows a similar format, and we won't go through every chapter now, but each chapter opens with public input. So it's a summary of what we heard in talking to the public on this topic. So on the topic of economy, what did people have to say? On the topic of transportation, what did people have to say? Next in each chapter is data and information and analysis, and that comes in various forms. Maps like that one there show a heat map of traffic crashes to point out and locate where transportation road safety issues are occurring. Each chapter contains goals, and these goals are brought over from the strategic plan that was adopted in 2021. And so we make connections between that plan and this. And each chapter contains tactics. I mentioned those a few minutes ago, but tactics are meant to be the sort of to-do list. That is, in order to bring about our vision for the county in 20 years, what are the things that ought to be done? And so those range from small items that staff can carry out relatively easily as a part of their everyday duties, and some of the tactics involve much bigger things, like the expansion and upgrade of the water and sewer system, which are long-range projects that honestly will be very expensive projects. Each chapter closes with metrics, and so metrics are data points that can be used to measure the success of the plan's implementation. So, for example, the blue and green pie chart in the upper left is the balance between residential tax revenue and non-residential tax revenue. So most of the county's tax revenue, over 80%, comes from residential accounts, that is, property tax, personal property, that comes from residents, while less than 20% comes from business. And it is the goal stated in this plan and a goal that we've heard from many, to continue to shift that balance so that less of the tax burden falls to homeowners. Other metrics include the number of acres in conservation easement, that is permanently preserved lands in rural areas, the number of building permits that go into the development areas of the land use plan rather than in the rural areas, and the total miles of sidewalk that are present in the county. In the appendix to this plan is a tactics matrix. It summarizes all those individual to-do list items, but it also gives some additional information about which organization or county department is the lead and which other organizations or departments might support that action, the term, that is, short, medium, or long-term actions, and cost. And so that's given as a range from low-cost items to high-cost items, and resources that might be necessary, whether that's staff time, whether it's the acquisition of land, the location of some sort of outside grant funding opportunity in order to make these items happen. And so a lot of effort was made to sort of spread out the tactics, to have some relatively cheap and easy options on that list, but also to think now about the long-term, more expensive options. The Future Land Use Plan is probably the most important map in this document. It is a general guide to where development is acceptable and where development is not a good idea. We heard a lot from the community about the need for certain kinds of development, and we heard a lot from the community about the desire to preserve rural areas of the county. And so, over the course of our three-phase public engagement, we directly invited the public to participate by helping us map this land use. And so this is points plotted by members of the community for where development belongs and where development doesn't belong. The Future Land Use Map looks like this, and this Future Land Use Map is not a huge leap from the land use map that existed in older versions of the plan, but it divides the county into place types, that is, what areas where conservation is the most appropriate use, all the way up to village use, and the villages are Bottoms Bridge, Providence Forge, and the courthouse, as well as commercial areas and industrial areas. The map is relatively closely correlated with zoning. And so the summary of land use looks like this chart, that is, the rural land use category is almost 58% of the total land area of the county. Agricultural and forestal, 13%, residential, almost 11%, and sort of tapering off from there. So, you know, the majority of the county falls into those conservation and agriculture and rural patterns. The document contains in its appendix a Future Land Use Matrix that gives further guidance and further definition of those different place types that the map divides into. It's a lot of very small type that doesn't do well on PowerPoint slides, but for each of those future land use categories, it describes the intent of the area, whether the intent is development or preservation, the types of land uses that might be appropriate, the type of densities that might be appropriate, and connectivity, which means transportation facilities, utilities, which in most cases means, is this an area where it's appropriate to have public water and sewer facilities or not? It also discusses zoning. As I said, that Future Land Use Map is very closely tied to zoning. The Comprehensive Plan, as required of you by state law, is a guidance document. So nothing that's in this document holds the force of law or forces anyone to do anything with their property. Zoning is the legal mechanism that you use to shape land use in the county, and so we need to make those ties. And so this is an example of those future land use categories, for example, for the village, all the descriptions that go into that, the zoning categories that are appropriate, that the village areas are all served by or should be served by public utilities, and so on. So this map, not so easy to read either, but this map shows the individual changes that were made to the Future Land Use Map as a result of this process, so changes from the Future Land Use Map that was already existing. So everything that has a little dashed line around it and a letter on it is a change. And so you can see that overall, the change is relatively modest. New Kent County has been on a path for quite some time now that says that development is appropriate in certain areas and preservation of the rural area and farms and conservation is appropriate in others. And so this map was adjusted in many ways to conform with existing zoning, to provide an appropriate amount of land for the types of development that are suggested, and also simply to sort of catch up with the truth of what has been developed. So if something was called rural but is now a subdivision, we need to acknowledge it as a subdivision. The transportation chapter may be potentially the second most important chapter, comes with several important maps, including maps that summarize recommended and in-process transportation projects, that's both roadway projects and multimodal projects, which are bicycle pedestrian-type projects. And there's an appendix that summarizes those projects, gives their location, ties them to VTранs, and VTранs is the statewide transportation plan for all of Virginia. And we know that projects that are tied directly to needs expressed in this statewide plan are projects that you have the greatest chance of actually funding and executing. The transportation chapter also makes some recommendations generally for street designs when it comes to new development. Most new streets that come to New Kent County over the next 10, 20, 30-plus years will be as a result of development rather than a result of the Virginia Department of Transportation. The state does not have a great deal of funding for putting new roads in new places. Most of your new roads will come as a part of a development application, and so there's some recommendations for the type and design of streets that are appropriate, and that, you know, we feel that, you know, development should be quality development that provides quality streets. So that is the end of the summary. I'm very happy to answer any questions at all and have any discussion at all. So this is, you know, the document itself. I think some of you may have mentioned trying to print it. It is roughly 100 pages. It is quite a lot to take in. That's pretty typical of, you know, when we start a comprehensive plan that's meant to talk about comprehensively the entire county, it does tend to get lengthy. In reading this document, whether as a planning commissioner or supervisor or member of the public, no one is going to be shocked, I don't think, by what's in this plan. You all have established a path that dates back a couple of decades now, that largely says that there are areas near Interstate 64, along major interchanges, where you feel that development should be clustered in the future, and that your outlying areas, especially to the north and the south along your rivers, is not an appropriate place for development. And so this plan sort of holds that line. And so I don't think it's a shocking turn of events, but the idea is to plan for a successful New Kent County future. And we did a lot of interaction with New Kent County residents, and I don't think we heard from anyone that this county needs to turn 180 degrees and go back in a different direction. People are very understanding of the growth pressures that this county faces. The growth pressures that you face are, in many ways, outside of your own control. A lot of it comes from your neighboring localities, but you all have done a good job in the past of balancing growth and preservation, and the public is very hopeful that that continues.
Mr. Chair? I got a couple. Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Where are we in this? Okay, well, I forgot where we are.
I was going to open it up for comments.
Oh, well, thank you. Todd, there's, one of the things we've learned is that how well developers read the Comprehensive Plan, and they throw it at us, you know, from that exact spot. And one of the things I noticed, that there are a number of numbers in here that are different in different columns. 2.63 people per house, and then in the table, it has 2.60. I know that's been brought up to us about, you know, how many kids are going to be in school if there's a development. The population in one area says 24,139, then another figure says 25,675, and then what you just showed there was 27,000. The inconsistency sometimes, you know, can be, you know...
That's certainly not something we want to do, and I think that inconsistency probably comes from different years of data.
Yes. Two of those were Weldon Cooper, and one wasn't. So that could be that difference. Also, the mean income is 51,609, and that's as it's spelled out there, but there are two different family incomes that are written. One is 120,000 in a paragraph, and then the table that talks about average mean, and in regards to 80%, 60%, 100% of that, is listed 109,000. Well, that would make a big difference on what that would be. So when they're looking at, you know, what housing is needed, they can look at that a little bit differently. I'm not quite sure where you got the 81.7% of residential contributions versus 18.3 of the business. We'd like to see that actually happen. We're closer to 87% and 13% for personal property and real estate versus commercial. So...
That was a relatively recent analysis by the Commissioner of Revenue.
Okay.
We did appreciate their efforts, and I expect there are different ways to slice that question, and that may result in that...
There has been discussion of whether you put capital in there at the same time. And if you put capital funds in there, it can be that number. But we don't go day by day on capital. We go on operating. But thank you, Todd.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ben.
Mr. Gordon, last month was the formal release of this document for the public, is that correct? For input, I mean, from, as a draft, complete draft? Or has it been released to the public?
It has been released to the public. We held an open house, and I, although it wasn't the full text of the plan, it was...
I remember that. But the full text, excuse me for interrupting, but the full text has been released to the public.
About a month ago.
A month ago. Has there been...
At the same time as the joint work session.
Okay. So since that time period, has there been any feedback response from the public that's noteworthy, that maybe caused a relook or something?
We've heard from several people, many simply asking about the process and when public hearings would be held, but I don't think anything that was sort of required further research or anything like that.
Has there been few and far between, or has it been...
Relatively few. I think it's been...
Thank you, sir.
We have accepted at all times feedback through the website. There is a project website, newkent2045.com, and, you know, maybe it's been four or five, three or four, since the plan was put on the website.
Other commissioners?
Madam Chair, I think there's a typo. Are we going to get into the corrections like this? There's a typo on one of the pages, and I think some percentages are wrong in the school growth. It says 16.8, but it adds up to about 15% from the table. Basically, a couple of typos. And then the question that I have is, the 2012 Comprehensive Plan was 120 pages, and it was mostly text, right? Lots and lots of words. This one is shorter, 112 pages, and lots and lots of pictures. So we've done, you know, illustrations. We've done away with a lot of kind of language, and I don't know, is that a concern? Have we lost granularity that might be needed to, you know, detailed explanation of things? I know we wanted the illustrations, but I don't know, did we go too far with that?
My answer would be no. I think the inclusion of more chart-based data and certainly more maps, I consider an improvement. I think it's more accessible to the public. Also, as we went through the tactics, we spent a lot of time, as a steering committee, talking about the tactics that would be listed, and this is overall a shorter list of tactics than was included in the 2012 plan. And the reasoning behind that is that I think there was an effort to kind of get down to the things that are realistically accomplishable. I think there was also some redundancy in the listing of strategies in the 2012 plan, to get down to a list that is a bit more manageable, and that's something we often advise, to be realistic. The state code of Virginia, when it discusses comprehensive plans, requires that the county consider, at least every five years, the plan and whether updates are needed. And so when thinking about tactics, on one hand, we're thinking about the next 20 years, and New Kent 2045, on the other hand, thinking about what might be advanced in the next five years before you have your next look.
Madam Chair, for Mr. La Rochelle, I believe there was, I want to say, almost 300 various tactics that were outlined in the previous Comprehensive Plan. Some of them were, I would not say with any kind of work scope, no timeline whatsoever, and I believe it was, from my memory, from the steering committee, that the idea was to pare them down, so that they were achievable tactics within this timeframe, not just a broad brush of everything.
Mr. Gordon, as far as the process for actually finalizing this document, taking into consideration especially the potential footnote... taking into consideration especially the, the potential footnote-ing or adjustment in, in the numbers, giving more explanation. You know, what does, what does that timeline look like?
Sure. So this is a public hearing and you are welcome. The legal advisor should certainly correct me, but you can either put this off for another public hearing in the future while we make the revisions and corrections to figures as necessary. And I, it's been my experience that other plans have been adopted pending the revision to, you know, a typo or a figure. So that's, that is my understanding, that both of those are options. And then, of course, you make a recommendation to the board and we'll make a presentation at their public hearing as well.
Madam Chair, just a question. Is there a timeline that the Board of Supervisors has to get this?
I think that's at your discretion, but.
No. There's no, there's no statutory timeline to, to get this.
Correct, correct. So if this body adopts the comprehensive plan or amends and adopts the comprehensive plan, then there would be a 150-day time within the board to act. But if this board declines to take any action now, that 150 days would not trigger.
Mr. Avram. Regarding a pending approval but pending, is that an option as well? So if it's just a correction, a few noted corrections, how does that work?
So this body recommends action to the board and then the board could then make changes themselves.
It'd just be an approval with, with the recommendation to correct whatever listed items we?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon, also, I guess, just for, more for the public benefit, how many, I guess, resident or citizen contacts did we have during the process? I know some have been, would have been duplicated if they either commented online or gave us information or attended one of the meetings that I know.
I'm not sure that I have an accurate count of individual connections, but, you know, I would say in the area of 1,000. So our first open house was well-attended, but not shockingly so. It was about 75 people. In our second phase of in-person meetings, we had three individual meetings, one in the east of the county, one in the middle and one in the west. They were all extremely well-attended with attendance of 125 to 150 each. And then our open house had an attendance just over 100, about 100 to 120. And then we also had the survey opportunity at two, two phases. When we had, I think it was 450 or 550 participants in the initial survey and a slightly lower number in the second survey. So now many of these people may have been the same people and we appreciate their attention throughout. But I think we consider it a pretty good turnout with a good level of engagement for a community of your size.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I think you may have said it, but just to clarify it for me, at what point did the citizens have an opportunity to look at it in the format we have tonight?
In the full 100-page document format. That was added to the website about a month ago at the time of the, at the time of the joint work session. The, the major elements, the land use maps, demographic figures, all the tactics were available even earlier than that, before all the, the text went in.
I guess the concern I have is, have we had any responses from the final process as it is now? And whether or not we've given enough time?
That was my question. Basically. Yeah. Thoughts? You know, the, the document has been out there and has been available and we did not get a great deal of feedback once it was in its final format. But, you know, those, the planned contents that were available as a, as an open house and that was, that was very well-attended.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I guess just maybe as a comment, having been involved with, on the steering committee for a better time, and it's been a long, a long process, we'll say. And I think too, maybe this draft is, it's a compilation of what the input has been to this point. So I, granted, there's going to be some citizens, maybe a few citizens that have just read this for the first time. I like to think that hopefully there's more than those citizens have been keeping up with it since the beginning. So this, I think, hopefully reflects what we've learned in the last three years versus, because it wasn't done within the last month or so. So it's been a buildup of information from, in input from citizens as well as staff.
Yeah. I mentioned that, that plan website, newkent2045.com has carried through the entire process with draft documents added to it throughout. And so every draft that was created, every presentation to the steering committee or to earlier versions of planning commission were all posted publicly as well. And so, yes, it has come together now in this, in this final text and, you know, captions added to pictures and so on. But every draft has been available throughout.
Madam Chair. Do you, do you track the hits on the page? How often, like, you know, what's your daily hit count? And what, when it was posted, was it advertised? Was there any kind of notifications that went out that is available for review?
We did not do a separate campaign to publicize the final draft beyond the draft elements that were available at the public open house. So that public open house was very well-advertised and, and all the information that was available, we met at the middle school. All that information was also available online, postcards to every, every address and so on. But there wasn't a separate postcard to say, you know, the final format that will go to the planning commission is, is available now.
How about the, the hit count on the 2045 webpage?
Yeah, certainly saw it go up and saw a few more comments from folks in the last month since that document's been available. Again, many of those, you know, where people did submit questions, there are mostly questions about process rather than about the, the content of the document.
Madam Chair. For Reverend Hathaway, being part of the steering committee with Mr. Davis here, there was, I would think, Mr. Gordon would agree, there was a little bit of a waning experience in participation about midway through, maybe a third to midway through. And basically, the steering committee will kind of circle the wagons and says, how do we get more public participation in this? And I think the idea of doing the mailings eventually came out from that to get the stronger participation. But time just kind of erodes that participation and we just start waning again. Now, if your suggestion continuing public input for a month or so, I'd be supportive of that because I think more public participation, worthwhile public participation is great, but it shouldn't just prolong an experience that's eventually coming to an end.
Madam Chair. Just looking at it from my perspective, I, I like the plan. It certainly links to the needs and the community desires as we knew it in that process and it's measurable. My, my only concern is, I'm looking at it in this final format and, and I'm going to vote based on the final format. I'm just concerned how many citizens, if we did not advertise the final format, how many citizens are looking at it? And, and this is a plan that's going to guide us for the next five years or more, you know? I'm, I'm not for delaying it any extended period of time. I'm simply concerned that maybe we have not given the citizens enough time or notice that the final format can be reviewed and they could provide comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. The public advertisements that ran in the Tidewater Review did link the website and point to the final draft being on that website, the newkent2045.com. So those obviously went out for this meeting. They'll go out for the board meeting that's scheduled for May. Again, it's at your discretion, but those did go out as required by law.
When did they go out?
The ads ran for three weeks for this meeting, starting on April 9th, I believe, and then leading up to this meeting. And then they'll go out for the board as well.
I would like to, yeah. I would agree with Dr. Hathaway on this one because as I, as I read through, and I've been reading through for a while now, but the more I reread, I see things that kind of catch my attention. And I brought up in the last meeting that I attended as well, this whole accessory building. Ms. Townsend, which she's not here today, she spoke on the, the, the extra uses that for folks who have smaller homes. And just, it, it's very limited. The, the language of it, it includes a lot of things that I think would impact the citizens, from carports to garages to sheds. It's a lot of things that's going to be impacted.
That's the next agenda item, the zoning text amendment. So this is still the draft comprehensive plan.
So it is not part of the?
Common plan, no.
Okay.
That's a separate item.
That was reading all of it together.
Yeah, that's a separate item that Angela will speak to in a few minutes.
Okay, okay, good.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioners, so the options that the planning commission has before you are, adopt the plan, amend and adopt the plan, recommend denial of the plan, or you could defer to a further meeting. We would run more public advertisements, could potentially do some more linking. Those four options are available to the commission and I would just like to remind that we haven't actually done, I guess, the public hearing portion.
Considering, I think we've gotten the majority of the questions and comments out of the way, we need to, we need to actually open up to the, anyone who signed up to speak for the public hearing. No one signed up to speak? Hearing none, is, is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up to speak that wishes, wished to speak?
I signed up to speak on the other topic.
On the other topic, okay, thank you. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, turn it back over to, to the chairman and we can have more.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the public hearing is, is closed. Any, any further discussion from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, so how do we compile corrections or what Mr. Moore had brought up with the numbers? And we need to come up with a detailed list of corrections?
Just only as, thinking light as a suggestion, if there's corrections that we would want to make sure that are considered, is it maybe a correction or the methodology on the figures that are present that are being, you know, maybe not challenged? But, you know, again, if it's a different number for this or that, what is the source? If the source is not, you know, the source should be cited. Or what's the methodology behind that ultimate figure? So you can kind of compare apples to apples versus apples and oranges. So if it's 25,000 residents in one, cited in one part of the, the document, then there's, you know, 27,000 in another, why is that? Is that, again, because we, we can't control the sources so much or can't correct the sources?
Sure. One of the challenges of sourcing all the data for this plan is, was the length of the process. And so we may have sourced a figure in 2023 as we were working on that section and newer information became available later and we may have incompletely put them in there. There was certainly an effort to update figures at the very end to make sure that we were using the, the most recent population and, and income figures. And so I think that is likely the, the source of the discrepancy you mentioned, that it may be showing a 2024 figure in, in one area and a 2023 in another. And so we, we certainly apologize for any discrepancy and it would be a relatively simple thing to triple-check and make sure that we're using the, the most recent figure in each chart and column.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I make a suggestion on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
My suggestion would be if any of the Commissioners has information or direct question that it be funneled through the planning staff and then get to Mr. Gordon. Otherwise, having 11 people bully you around, you know? That's, sometimes those questions or that information can be summarized, that it covers several individuals' questions with one ask of the, of the consultant instead of individual ask.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Reverend.
In, in the event those changes do come forward to staff, would we have an opportunity to review them?
Well, I think that depends on the course of action we take tonight. So if it's, if we approve with, if we approve it and with the recommendation to forward it to the board, then I don't think we would have that opportunity to offer any, or to review those, except obviously maybe to review and, but at the time of the, but the board would have to, I guess, take up those corrections and factor that in in their decision. You know, I think the only, only opportunity we have, if, if we want to review any questions or corrections we may have from tonight, is that if it is tabled or deferred, then you'd have the opportunity to address it again and then we.
Mr. Chair. If I understand it, the only corrections are the ones I've mentioned. And so we've, what, about, about whether it's been advertised or? Oh, oh, you're talking about that.
There's a percentage and there's a typo in the year. So that's just a grammatical thing, but for a document that we're going to be referencing for 10 years, let's get it right.
Yes, we certainly apologize. It's no intention of having any typos in here and we would certainly fix them.
But.
Go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
Madam. The, the, the structure of the plan, I, I think everybody can agree that it's, the, the structure is good, that, you know, the, the, the basic, the, the way it's laid out is, is, is great, is great. It's, it's very easy to follow. It sounds like most, most of the changes that we would be recommending are fact-checking and get, getting everything consistent. So, you know, I, I'd hate to hold up the process but so much for, for adjustments in, 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 in numbers. You know, as long, as long as they're, as long as they're corrected before, before it's inked.
And we would be assured? Mr. Chair, and we would be assured the board's not going to come back to the planning commission for not fact-checking it right?
Yes.
Of course, the board can change any numbers in there. You know, then, so. And I think, I think the format is like really good, really, really good. I'm just looking out for those things that we get back as a board supervisors about things that, you know, we, we don't want to caught off, be caught off-guard by numbers being.
things that, you know, we don't want to caught off, be caught off guard by numbers being a little bit miscued, okay? That's all we're saying. Thank you.
Well, and is it possible to have, again, if it's, whether it's, you know, the misspelled word, and I agree with Mr. LaRochelle, I mean, I've been known to edit a thing or two myself, but. And yeah, and I do want everything to be certainly correct, factually correct, and again, from an editorial perspective, that, you know, certainly everything is done correctly for the reader. And I guess the differences of opinion of what number is the correct number, again, I don't know if it would help if there was an errata, not, it wouldn't be an errata sheet, but an addendum or some type of note to the fact that some of the numbers were arrived, they were good numbers, are good numbers, again, depending on the source. So again, it's up to the reader to know, or to take it upon themselves to, you know, do I believe Weldon Cooper, for example, is this a good number? Or is it something that our own planning adjusted Weldon Cooper numbers to get a current? Because, you know, it's the, we rely on the 10-year census, and again, it's always all these adjustments for population in between these, in his in-between years, from, again, from the state demographer, and then, again, we make adjustments locally.
Again, many of these figures, I think the ones Mr. Moir is citing, are figures that are drawn from the census. And I think the issue is that we updated them several times throughout the process when a new census came out. You know, we started with the 2022 numbers because that was the best that was available at the time. We updated to the 2023 when that became available, and so I think that has caused the issue. So, you know, we know that the right number is the most recent information, and we just need to make sure that's in there. And like any plan, you know, shortly after adoption, you know, the census will publish next year's numbers, and the plan will be, you know, a bit behind again. And that is one thing that, you know, you may sort of check as an update process, is, you know, updates to numbers so that you understand where you stand at all times.
Mr. Chairman, I could support it with the understanding that staff will work with fact checking it, and if there are any corrections, that those corrections will come back to planning commission.
And I guess in, I guess still based on the motion, if it's a motion to approve versus a motion to defer, the, those facts, I guess the fact check numbers that we're talking about, if, we may get it in, lack of a better term, in hindsight, but if it was moved forward to the board, they would have that information. I mean, we could have it as well, but I mean, we would have, we would be in a position to take an opportunity to vote on that, if, again, depending on the motion we have tonight to move forward or not.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that, it seems like there's sort of two thought processes here. One would be a motion to approve with the amendments that the figures and grammatical errors be checked, and that can certainly be given back to you, but that would also be technically an action by giving that recommendation, so that would trigger the 150 days for then the governing body, the board, to take action. You could also defer it and have it come back to you before that timeline starts. It's really up to the planning commission's pleasure on which path you go, if that's where you want to go.
Mr. Chairman, I like the first option. I don't really want to defer, okay? Because I really think it's good, it's measurable, I just want to be sure that the facts are correct, and as long as they come back to us, I'm comfortable with that.
Well, and an observation as well, if, let's say if we do defer and then we review the corrections, I'm afraid sometimes we go down a rabbit hole, then the next time we look at it again, oop, there's something else we missed. So what do we do? Do we, it's, so, you know, I think at some point we do have to have some faith that it's going to ultimately be the best document we can develop for the time, at the time. Will there be the one-off, you know, misspelled word or number that's a transposed number or something? I mean, I think that's, is a little bit of a risk. I like to think a very, very small percentage. I hope it's a very, very small percentage, and I think hopefully not only our sets of eyes have been looking at it, and some of our eyes have been looking at it for quite a few years now, and it almost, you know, and I don't want to say it looks the same, but, you know, it's hard to pick out something that looks different now, after looking at it so many different times and so many different versions of it. So, but certainly it's going to be, I guess, the pleasure of the commission to, again, to approve as is and with the recommendation to move forward to the board, or again, you know, if we can come up with a suitable language to approve and to ensure that it is as factually correct as it should be, and then, or the, to defer or not approve. Certainly, I think that's our choices, correct?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Mr. Everard to come up for a second. How would that work if we, if we were to make a motion to approve, knowing that there may be amendment that we need to approve, as Reverend Hathaway has suggested, how would that actually take place in this quorum? A chance like me, it would have to be deferred in order for it to be amended with our review and then, and then forward with a positive recommendation.
So do you, I guess, deferral or approval with the amendment is the difference between, do you want to see it again before it goes to the board and then take action at that time? Or do you want to direct staff to make the changes that have been identified, and then those changes will be taken to the board?
Let me pause you right there for a second. Reverend Hathaway, were you thinking that whatever changes that may occur, the staff would approve, it would not necessarily come back to the commission?
That's correct. I simply want to see the changes, so that if I'm talking to this.
You have to defer.
Right, I don't want.
Well, no, no.
I don't want to defer.
You don't want to defer. If staff compiled all the, all the changes and just sent it to us.
That's right. There's no need for further action by the commission.
And I would suggest, if that hap, when that happens, that you compile the changes and everything, you get that out to the planning commission, to have them call their board supervisor and say, I agree with those changes, it was part of the changes we've asked for, and read through the comprehensive plan again, and tell us as board supervisors how you feel at that time. I think that's not a bad way of.
And we would have to, just by the nature of taking those changes, have to set it out from the board a little bit of time. We wouldn't be putting it on the very next month's agenda like we were, you know, originally having noticed for, because we would need some time to make sure that we were able to receive sort of some of the questions that have been identified and check it.
So, in essence, if we look at compressed timelines, us deferring it tonight to next month, knowing that we have a time period of changes that we can review, which still set the same timeline as if we allow the comprehensive plan to go ahead with staff-sponsored changes to go to the board, but because of delay to the board, it was current June, too.
So.
Right? I mean, we're looking about the same timeline.
It depends, because you would not have then made action tonight, and then the way that the advertising rules are in Virginia currently, we have to advertise twice, once more than seven days before the public hearing, and once the second, the first time, less than 28 days. And because we have our planning commission meetings at the end of the month, we have our board meetings at the end, at the beginning of the month, if we put it on the next month, we end up advertising it virtually simultaneously. We have to have those ads in the paper by the time that we have this hearing, so we end up kind of rolling it a little bit. So I think we end up with an extended timeline if it's deferred regardless, by a month or so.
Yes, let me be clear. If we approve it tonight with the understanding that staff will look at and fact check the numbers, and simply if they make changes, send it back to us, does that require an additional public hearing? My thinking is it doesn't, but.
Not if you're approving it with the amendments that you've identified.
Right.
We would then not be bringing it to the board from May, we'd be likely bringing it to June. But if you defer to May, then we're probably bringing it July.
Would we have to, okay. If we approve it tonight, simply with the, they ask that staff fact check the numbers, and if in fact there are corrections, they would simply let us know what the corrections are. We've already approved it, so it would seem to me, it doesn't have to come back to us. It then goes to the board, and then the board would be able to incorporate that in their public hearing.
Yeah, but the board, you're not going to be taking it to the board because you do have to make changes until June, correct? Even, if we approve it tonight, it's still, with proposed changes, it's still not going to go to the board for a public hearing until the June meeting.
Correct, to give staff and Mr. Gordon enough time to actually make sure that we're getting it right, you know?
So all that, all that time is additional time for the public to look at it as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that will also be noticed for public hearing, and it'll be on our website.
If we approve tonight, Mr. Moir, will that give you what, I know the rest of the board is not here, but that, would that give you what you need?
I would say that if there is concern for the staff to get that, it would be, needed to be done before, one week before our business meeting, which is May 6th. Then it would be on the agenda, which means I would think the comprehensive plan would be in that agenda. I don't know if they can do it in that time, so approving it tonight, at least my point, I'd be comfortable coming back in June as a board supervisor to look at it, whether approve it or not.
Yeah, I think I can speak for staff when I say that we're not going to be able to pull it out a week before May.
No, there is even more timelines there.
Right.
Thank you for that.
And a follow-up to that, so Mr. Rogge, if we were to offer these suggestions or the opportunity for you to fact check, when would you need those comments from the planning commission to, again, give Mr. Gordon enough time to make those corrections for the June meeting?
I mean, we have an ample amount of time. As we've said, action tonight triggers the 150-day clock for the board to take action. So I mean, that would give us ample time to work with EPR to get those changes made. I will say for the public watching and the public that are here, because of the tight timelines, we have already advertised for the comp plan to go before the board, kind of working on an assumption that there would be an action tonight. So you will see that in the paper for May's meeting. We will strike that public hearing from the board's agenda, so please just disregard the May notice that says it will be on the board agenda, because we'll take it at a later month once we've had time to work with EPR.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? I'm willing to entertain a motion. We might, we might need a little wordsmithing, I think, to get it correct for Mr. Everard's benefit.
Who's going to make the motion?
In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC 06-25 to force the New Kent 2045 Comprehensive Plan to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation and fact checking the numbers by staff.
Can we work with that language, Mr. Everard?
Yes. Sorry, I did the thumbs up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking down, I was trying to. No. I was trying to find the section where he was reading from. All right, so we do have a motion from Reverend Hathaway for PC 0625 recommending a favorable recommendation of the New Kent County 2045 Comprehensive Plan with the following amendment, that fact checking, fact checking the numbers in the document will be done prior to submission to the board. Thank you, Reverend. So we have a motion before us. Mr. Rider, can you poll the Commissioners, please?
Mr. LaRochelle.
Aye.
Mr. Moir.
Abstain.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you all for your hard work on this, a lot of discussion, so it's, so in the meantime, certainly if we have anything we need to pass on to staff, to pass on to Mr. Gordon, please do that earlier rather than later, so, thank you. All right, and we have another public hearing, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second public hearing for tonight is the zoning text amendments regarding accessory structures and Board of Zoning Appeals.
Good evening, my name is Angela Leflet, the zoning administrator for New Kent County, and tonight I will be presenting two ordinance text amendments. One of them was previewed in February at the planning commission for some feedback. We've taken some of that feedback and applied it and made some changes to the ordinance that you will see tonight. So the first ordinance amendment will be for accessory buildings and uses. So the proposed changes, just to summarize them, is to amend the definition of accessory building and add the definition for accessory dwelling units, increase the allowed limit for accessory buildings for lots zoned residential A1, as well as a small increase for our residentially R-zoned properties, and then clarify some longstanding interpretations that have not been codified in the ordinance to make it clearer for our community, citizens, and contractors as they're reading the ordinance to not have to wonder, is that all to the ordinance, or is there an interpretation that they're not aware of? So the first proposed amendment would be to Chapter 98, Article 1, Section 98-2, amending the accessory building definition. We're adding the word "or" structure. Sometimes those words are used interchangeably, so we want to just make sure that we are recognizing that accessory building or structures is encompassed in this definition. The majority of the definition remains the same. However, in the red text that's italicized, you'll see that such structures include but are not limited to carports, garages, sheds, pool houses, barns, pole barns, workshops, gazebos, and lean-tos. So some of that language comes from the already existing accessory buildings and uses ordinance section that we'll see later. However, some of these, such as lean-tos, gazebos, pole barns, pool houses, they were other interpretations. So as you were reading the ordinance, you saw maybe three or four structures. This is just to give a little bit more clarity to our citizens as well as those who read our ordinance. Additionally, we'll be adding accessory dwelling unit definition as a, so accessory dwelling units, those are a separate use from an accessory structure, so we just want to make sure that we define those separately. So an accessory dwelling unit is a secondary living unit to a single-family detached dwelling that has a separate kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping area, existing either within the same primary structure or a detached structure on the same lot as the primary dwelling unit. So moving forward to the current ordinance for Chapter 98, Article 1, Section 9810, Portion C, then discusses the following accessory uses or structures shall be permitted in conjunction with the residence, going to. Going to Subsection 3, as you read this section of the ordinance, there's some situations here that aren't as clear. So when we're looking at the fourth line down, starts with living, provided such structure does not exceed 50% of the total floor area of the primary structure. So those are for our residentially zoned districts. And then the last sentence, in the agricultural A1 district, such structure may total 3,000 square feet. If you're reading that, so my first time joining New Kent County, when I was reading the ordinance and getting familiar, I read that and thought, oh, so they can have numerous structures at 3,000 square feet per structure. That's a lot. And then the same thing with the first portion, where such structure couldn't exceed 50% of the total floor area of the primary structure. To me, as someone learning the ordinance and then just thinking of our citizens, when you read that, that reads each individual structure could be that size. However, the longstanding interpretation has been that it's a collective cumulative number of all the accessory structures. So if you have a pool house, a shed, a gazebo, a lean-to, all of that was combined in this number, but it doesn't read that way. So the proposed amendment that we are making, it's shown in red here. We're taking the word "shall" and replacing it with "will." So those are some minor, or will, or can, or must, those are minor changes. But looking at the bulk of the changes, on properties in a residential zoning district, you can see where we struck through carports, garages, utility sheds, and similar storage facilities. We just took that and put it into the definition. So we're directing people back to the definition to see accessory buildings as defined in the ordinance, rather than just making a whole list here. This also is taking that and codifying those accessory buildings that were interpretations that just weren't listed in the ordinance. So in the residential zoning districts, accessory buildings as defined in the ordinance that are customarily associated with residential living, the cumulative total of all detached accessory structure, so we're adding an S to structures, may not exceed 60% of the total floor area of the primary structure. So as you can see here, this is the minor change that we made to the residential zoning districts, rather than 50%, we're moving it up to 60%. And this came from feedback from several citizens who were proposing to have garages, a detached garage placed on their property. They already had a shed or two on the property. So more specifically, the one that I was working with, that was just kind of an eye-opening experience for me, was a 1,400-square-foot home was proposing to have a 672-square-foot detached garage. They don't have a garage on their home at all, so they're just currently parking out in the weather. So being able to park in a covered space for their vehicle and to have some storage, when I factored in the two accessory sheds that they currently have on their property, they're not able to do the detached garage. So then they have to figure out, what do they want to get rid of? What are they trying to downsize in order to have a detached garage for their use? When I ran the number on this property, as well as several others, so I tried not to just focus on one, I tried to pull a collective that had a similar situation, 60% would get them there so they could keep their sheds and have their detached garage. It's pretty close, I believe, on this particular one, it was right at the cap. But it allows for our residents with smaller homes in the residential districts to get just a little bit more, to make their living a little bit more comfortable. So moving on to the A1, this is what we talked about last time pretty heavily. Not much had changed. So the way that this would read is that the agricultural districts, such structures may total up to 5% of the lot area beyond the front setback line, but may not exceed a cumulative total of 10,000 square feet, whichever is less. In any case, on lots less than 20 acres, the total number of accessory buildings cannot exceed eight on a single lot. And the total square footage does include, but not limited to roof structures, whether it's attached or detached gazebos, porches, and lean-tos on accessory buildings. So the changes that happened here from the presentation on in February is we had previously had on lots not less than 25 acres, so we reduced it a little bit. And then the total number of accessory buildings cannot exceed, it previously said five, so we've upped it to eight. And then we, again, are codifying the interpretation that lean-tos, those porches and covered gazebos, do count towards the square footage. So then the, just so that, two minor things that we did, just to give some clarity, Section 9810(c)(6), home occupations, we've had some questions about having a home occupation in a detached accessory structure. And the interpretation has been, it needs to be developed and habitable for human occupancy in standard with the Residential Building Code. So this gives a little bit more clarity to contractors and citizens, that you could have a home occupation in a detached structure, it just can't be a tough shed from Lowe's. You've got to make it towards habitable. And then some questions had come about regarding swimming pools above ground and partially in-ground pools, does that count towards the accessory structure limit? It does not. So again, we're just clarifying that here in this section. So when drafting this ordinance change, I did look at surrounding localities that had a pretty similar makeup to New Kent County as close as possible. And as you can see, some of them, about four of them, don't regulate the right size of accessory structures at all. A good chunk of them had rear yard, square footage percentage of 30%. Two of them had the rear yard where it is past the front setback line, most notably King and Queen, when I reached out to their zoning administrator, had confirmed this. And this is something that staff liked, because a lot of our A1 properties have homes that are set a little bit more further back. And so if you don't have much of a rear yard to work with, and you're wanting to place something on the side yard, how do we capture that, too? So looking at that front setback line and going back, and I'll show that here in just a moment on some images, that's where we'll get that square footage of either 5% of that total square footage area or 10,000 square feet, whichever's less. So here are some examples on how this would work. This lot here, it's outlined in yellow for the lot boundary, and then everything shaded in blue, that is everything beyond the 75-foot front setback. So your front is, let's see if I can get the mouse to show, so your front setback is here. And then this would be 75 feet from here to here. And then all of this, this percentage, 5% of that would be 29,084 and 1/2. So the max allowed would be 10,000 square feet in this scenario. And then in this scenario, they could have up to the eight structures, and then up to 10,000 square feet, however they want to work that. Looking at a five-acre lot, again, their 5% is going to max out over the 10,000 square feet, so they're limited to 10,000 square feet. But again, you know, no more than eight structures. Looking at a little bit smaller lot, this is 3.24 acres, so their 5% is 1,858.4 square feet, is the max allowed. And again, eight structures. And I just do want to make note that you still have, they still have to meet setbacks. So A1's rear yard setback is 50 feet, the side yard is 25 feet, and then of course, the front yard would be 75. So in this situation, someone might not get all of the eight structures, because you're going to get constrained with that 25 and 50-foot setback. Some of these areas that I pulled, they had already some existing structures, and then I added to it from there. So while some of them look a little bit closer, those are probably existing structures. And then finally, here's a little bit smaller lot. I didn't find a whole lot of these, there's a smaller section in New Kent County where these are. But again, it is zoned A1, and their 5% would be capped at 416.5 square feet, and then they still have to meet setbacks. And just to recap, this increase would allow for the limit for accessory buildings on residentially zoned lots from 50 to 60% of the total floor area of the primary dwelling. The increase would be for the A1 zones from 3,000 square feet to 5% of the lot area past the front setback line, or 10,000 square feet, whichever is less. And then lots not, lots less than 20 acres could not exceed eight structures, detached structures. And then just to codify some longstanding zoning interpretation, so that it's a little bit more clear to read. So kind of shifting a little bit, because the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to kind of also play into our accessory structures towards the end, so I'm just going to shift to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the proposed updates is, we are looking to align our code with the Virginia State Code in regards to the Board of Zoning Appeals and state law. That way, as the state law changes, maybe they change the requirements for a variance, or they change a definition, we won't have to keep coming back to make those changes. We're referencing where in state code to go to, as well as giving some criteria for administrative modifications. We're amending the current variance definition to align with the Code of Virginia's variance definition. We're removing the special exceptions process. The special exceptions process is more use-based, so those go for conditional use permits to the Board of Supervisors. So we're leaving that in the hands of the Board of Supervisors, rather than coming for a special exception for a use to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then we are amending the administrative modification process to create clear guidelines. The way that it reads now, it's almost identical to a variance, there's just two pieces of criteria that's missing. So this way, we have a clear guideline of what qualifies as an administrative modification and what would qualify as a variance. So this section here would be the administrative modification criteria. So the two things that were struck is number one, struck as number one and three, we kept number two. And this guidance came from looking at other localities, and how do they handle an administrative modification? What's enough for administrative modification? And then what just needs to go for a Board of Zoning Appeals variance request? Also considering our building code, once you get into being too close to other structures and fire rating. So the consensus is that the encroachment does not exceed one and a half linear feet. We've kept number two the same, it's, the hardship's not generally shared by other properties. The forced compliance with a minimum setback in yard requirements would cause an undue hardship to the owner. And then the rest of the section, four through seven, and then B is the new language that, again, was modeled from several other localities, just to be consistent. And then Section B is what also kind of plays into our accessory building section of the ordinance. So there's the cap on the A1 of the 5% or no more than 10,000 square feet, and then eight structures for properties that are 20 acres or less. For bona fide farming operations, there's an administrative process that you can do, rather than going for a variance where you let us know that you're applying for this application, you're needing these excess structures that aren't permitted in the ordinance as is. And then staff would make sure that you meet that criteria, and then we would still have to send notification to neighbors, they have 21 days to respond. As long as nobody objects, then that administrative modification could be approved. Should there be an objection, it would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, I make it a point to let the applicant know ahead of time before they spend that money on the modification, and then they haven't talked to their neighbors, and then now they're stuck spending more money on a variance. So just to make note there, that while our accessory buildings ordinance does have that limitation, we're thinking also of how do we balance between the agricultural farming use, as well as a good majority of our citizens who live in an agricultural zone property, but they're not using it for agricultural purposes, it's just their primary residence and where they live. So that's where we've added the administrative modification for those farming operations. And that is the end of the presentation. So if you have any questions, I am available.
Commissioners? I've got a couple of questions, but...
When you were going through the presentation, one of the pages showed all of the counties, what the other surrounding counties are doing. My question is, why did we not take into account, I know that we took into account all of what everyone is doing, but why didn't we use, for example, James City? They don't have, am I reading correctly, they didn't have any limitations on structures at all?
Correct, they don't regulate the accessory structures. And so we did take into account what other localities do, but we're also trying to ensure that New Kent remains that rural feel and character that is seen throughout our strategic plan and comprehensive plan. If we take out doing any regulations on detached accessory structures, that winds up almost creating a sense of you can fill your property with structures. So to keep it from looking like many cities on each individual lot, how do we take the ordinance that we currently have and make it better? So expanding the square footage allotment makes it better than what it is now.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but there's always that one or that few that's an exception that, you know, go to the extreme. But for the most part, in this county, I believe that residents keep their properties pretty good. And so that's what I was wondering, why did, I just feel like, instead of making, you relaxed it in some areas, but you added more in other areas. For example, when I look at structures, you've included gazebos. And for myself, I live in A1, I live on a A1 property, and I have structures on the property already. That means I can't put a gazebo for my business. Even though I have farming equipment out there, I can't use a gazebo for my business because I've already met the max. And that seems, that's, I just believe that we've, we're adding, while we're relaxing in some areas, we're adding more in other places. That's what I feel. And if I'm wrong, someone speak up and please let me know I'm wrong, but I see more regulations, not relaxing the regulations. And when we look at the strategic plan, most of, all of the taxable income comes from the residents. That's, and we are being, it's a limit or a cap being put on what we can do for what we pay taxes for. That's what I'm trying to say.
I understand the concern, and I hear you. There is the process, as with any other portion of our zoning ordinance, so in regards to setbacks, or, I'm trying to think of another situation, it's kind of off the top of my head, but I'll just, I'll stick with setbacks for time. There is the option for a variance, when somebody wants to come forward and they can't meet their setbacks, where they can go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it's up to those five, that five-member board to determine, is there hardship based on the criteria? If so, they have the ability to approve or deny a variance request. So similar to the accessory structures, listing the porches and the gazebos and lean-tos, those have, that's part of the longstanding interpretation that has been on accessory structures, that hasn't been codified and hasn't been listed. So to remain consistent and including that into our ordinance so that it's clear, that's where we're adding it to. So we're not being more restrictive on the types of detached accessory structures, we're just now listing them that wasn't visible and available to the public as they read online with our ordinance.
So why couldn't we remove those things? For example, gazebos. That's something that's very common, that people would want to have in their yard. Why couldn't we remove them? Why did we have to include them to codify it?
Yep, so gazebos, I've seen range from something as small as about 100 square feet to over 1,000 square feet. So if we were just to take gazebos away, and then somebody come in and say, oh, I'm just building a 500-square-foot gazebo, well now I'm doing an 800-square-foot gazebo, it starts to add up. And so then it would require us to either completely get rid of gazebos and hope that properties don't become overrun with gazebos to bypass the accessory ordinance, or instead of trying to figure out what is a healthy number for a gazebo that would fall under this or not, we just list it all as one structure.
This is my last statement. I go back to, why can't the residents who own the property make the determination on whether or not we could have, for example, me, I'm the perfect example on this. Why can't I make the determination on whether something looks good on my property? Even though I have, even though there's barns and sheds, if I want something personally for myself in the back of my property, right now, I would have to go through a bunch of stipulations to get that approved. That's what I'm feeling. Okay.
But last time in February, you also said that people that already had stuff in their, on their property that they were grandfathered in. Did you not say that back in February?
Yes, ma'am. So once the, if the ordinance is passed and approved with the Board of Supervisors, everything that's been on the properties already, whether they're exceeding it or not, would be grandfathered in. It's those new structures that come in. So if somebody comes in to put a new structure, and let's say their cap is 10,000 square feet, and they're at a 10-acre lot, and they're already at the 11,000 square feet, that would be the time that if it's not falling under an administrative modification for a bona fide farming operation, the applicant has the right and the ability to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals to request a variance.
Ms. Chair, how big, how big is your property? Give us a, I'm trying to get a sense of...
My property is split in three. The 20, if it was all together, because it's split into portions, the portion that I'm referring to is about 15.8.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Even though it's all together, it sits, all of the lots sit together. It's still split.
It's still separate parcels?
It's separate parcels.
Okay.
So that one particular parcel is 15.8, which would stop me, which I would have to come and get approval to put a gazebo in the back.
So there is a portion of the accessory structures, it's the very beginning of the chapter, where it discusses that if you own the property next door with the primary structure on the property, then you could have that gazebo next door. If, not knowing the layout of your property, if that gazebo could be placed close to where you currently have, I mean, still, you would have to meet setbacks, but if it could be close enough within distance to wherever you're trying to place it for your property, there is that option as well. So that part's not being taken away out of the ordinance. That has been, remained the same. So there is that option that if you wanted to place the gazebo on the neighboring property that you own, meeting setbacks, there's that option.
Madam Chair, I guess talking about farms for a second. So are grain bins considered an accessory structure?
Yes.
Okay. And so a 20-acre farm, maximum eight buildings, 10,000 square feet, whichever is less, as far as...
Well, you would get the eight, but 5% or 10,000, whichever is less.
5% or 10,000. So that's still a little bit of a concern for me as far as the, and I agree that we're expanding the square footage that can be allowed in a majority of cases, but I still think there's probably a handful of farms that still may be limited or restricted. So I don't know if there's an opportunity, if it's a, if you identify a bona fide farm, and I don't know how it would do that unless it's got some, of course, if it's a USDA farm to where it's obviously has to file records with USDA. I don't know what other ways to identify it as compared to other properties on A1 zone. But 10,000 square feet may be cutting it close for some farms, or even not enough room, depending on the type of farming operation. And I'm also, I am taking into consideration, I know you probably read Mr. Tally's email to you.
Yes.
James Tally, who's also is on the AFD Board, as well as he was on the Comp Plan Update Committee. And so reading Mr. Tally's comments that he submitted by email, again, asks us to consider the size, basically the size, what would be allowed. And he brings up a good point, and having grown up on a farm similar to what he's describing, a lot of farms, a lot of farmers don't farm, all that they farm is not on their property in the immediate area of their home. So a lot of farms, I grew, again, with my father rented. I've got a brother who still farms. The majority of the farming occurs on somebody else's property. So we don't, they don't put a shed on someone else's property to house the equipment, for example. They don't put grain bins on someone else's property to store grain. They have to do it on their own property. So if you have, and some may be as small as 20 acres. So I'm concerned about the restrictions for those folks that it's, and it's not a, not a choice of making the property look good. It's a utilitarian process for them to have to build something because they need to build something, whether it's to house equipment, or livestock, or whatever the case may be.
Correct. And that's where the administrative modification, under the Board of Zoning Appeals ordinance amendment, would come in. If there is a farmer that is reaching out to us, asking the questions about the accessory structure limits, and they exceed the 10,000 or 5%, whichever is less, and then if they're 20 acres or less and they exceed that eight, that's where the opportunity comes, that we can let them know that there is administrative modification to request additional square footage or structures, whichever they're seeking for. If maybe they know in the next five years they're going to have to put X amount out, I would personally make the recommendation to them to just go ahead and include that because they're probably more so looking out ahead of their future for their budget. But there is that opportunity as well. And then this ordinance, should it be passed, we still have the whole zoning ordinance update that's going to happen. So if in that time that we're working on the update, we find that something just isn't working, something isn't working for maybe the limit on the eight structures or the acreage, we can then roll that into the entire zoning ordinance fix that we're going to do here soon. And then that way, we're not having to bring back a separate ordinance. But that gives us time to see how this works, see if it needs some adjusting between now and then, and then be able to allow those who are actively trying to add a detached garage on their property that they now, their whole property exceeds the 3,000 square feet, and they just can't do anything. So we do have that option as well.
Yeah. Like I said, it is a concern. And like I said, my own experiences, the, having grown up on a farm and the actual, basically where the parcel of, it was two acres that contained probably almost 10,000 square feet for a grain farming operation, which include two grain bins, two sheds, and which would, and if there wasn't an attached garage to the house, if they're, you know, probably couldn't have been able to put a detached garage for the residential use of the property, not farming use. I just still feel it's maybe a little bit limited, again, for those who are real, you know, are farmers, bona fide farmers. And again, because it's, all the acres they farm may not be at the site where they live. So anyway, that is still a concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair. Along the same lines, did you see any exceptions when you looked at other localities for farming? Because that's something we certainly want to support.
Not off the top of my head that I can just spout out what localities. I think one or two had exception process similar to this, but I can't off the top of my head tell you which ones it were, it was.
As far as that dividing line, the 20 acres, how did you derive that number?
So more so, staff was looking at what is a reasonable number. So 20 acre, at first, we had it at 25. We felt that maybe that was a little too high, so we lowered it a bit. And then trying to think of just farming operations and how large they get on properties, but also what's a good cutoff.
I'm just, I'm just looking at, well, I'm a numbers person. And by my calculation, the 10,000, that 10,000 max would be about 5%, equivalent to 5% on a 4.1-acre parcel. So there, that's a, that's a lot, a lot of room between 4 acres and 20, that where everybody's limited. I mean, I can, you know, 20 acres is a lot, and if it's properly buffered, I'm a little conflicted as to how much we should be limiting on the, even a parcel, a smaller parcel. I also had another just question. The accessory dwelling unit, that definition at the beginning?
Yes.
Is that really referring like to a mother-in-law suite, or?
Yes.
Okay. Because in the definition, it talks about either existing either within the same structure, which, or in a detached structure on the same prop. Is that where somebody's adding on?
Yes, ma'am. So some add-on, and it's not accessible from the interior of the primary home. They have their own entrance and exit on the outside.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, I've got some other questions. Dog pen, woodshed, detached garage, chicken coop, all would fall under this, right? I think it says trailers and boats would also count? If you have, anyone here about trailers and boats would also count against that?
No. That's number seven. So number three...
So they don't count?
No.
Okay, okay. I'm with Ms. Rose. I mean, 20 acres, and to me, nothing says rural more than sheds and barns and things like this on a property, and you can fill up real fast. You don't even have to be a farmer. If you've got equipment and you've got animals and things like that, eight structures on 20 acres is not a lot. You can have that, and it can be properly screened and everything else. I assume the intent is we don't want people cluttering up their yard, right, in an unsightly way, which I understand. But when you get up into larger lots, I see it as less of a concern to me. And that is, you go to Colonial Williamsburg, and despite every property down there has little outbuildings and stuff, and that's, you know, to me, that's part of the charm. So I agree with Ms. Rose. I think that particularly on the larger lots, and with Mr. Davis on the farming, I'm not a farmer, but limiting them to 10, and then if you want to go to BZA, is there a fee for that?
So for the BZA, there is a fee. It's $750. An administrative modification is $450.
I think that, I just think that's excessive.
I want to throw in here that I want, I really want to do something for the people who have applications pending. Let's make that clear. I really do. Because I don't, I'm one that don't like a lot of regulations. I really, I just feel that way. However, I do know right now where I am with getting, whether it's horses or cows, the space that I have between the hay and the tractors and all, it's going to eat that up fast. And I'm looking at this space. I'm looking at all of the items that I have right now. But on the other hand, I do not believe that gazebos or smaller structures like that should be included in, I just don't believe it should be included. And I don't, and I don't believe that going to have an appeal and to getting permission to do things on your property. I still feel like we should have followed more along, I believe it was Gloucester and James City County. We should have relaxed that more instead of adding to it. That's just my personal belief. I respect everyone's opinion here.
Any other comments from the commissioners? If not, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public comment portion. We'll hear from the public, and then we can, we can continue to discuss if need be. Thomas Pugh?
Hey, y'all, Billy. I'd like to try to paint a Norman Rockville picture for y'all. You know, all I can do is help. If it doesn't, then I guess I'll pay that $750 and then come down here and, you know, try my best to fight it. I've learned that you think you know, but you don't know what you don't know. I was unaware that I couldn't build on my property what I wanted. I've moved to New Kent County in '96. I got, I live at 8,500 Old Roxburgh Road. I got 4.92 acres. I'm about 3,000 foot off the road. I'm completely concealed. So I don't have nobody around me. My wife, 42 years, sitting there was an avid horse rider. And so bought a nag back in '97, and fenced in, I did everything per New Kent County specs. I fenced in about two acres for my horse at that point. And I built a garage. Anybody here got their first truck that they ever purchased? I got mine, and I keep it under a little carport. Any of y'all guys, any that got an air compressor? I got my air compressor and another little tube off the back of the garage that I feel to permit on. Built it per like structure through the covenants that I had there at the time. I had lawyers change it up later. But what I did is, I got that old '86 pickup truck with glass headlights sitting underneath there. My wife was an avid rider, and we had a little colt dropped out there on the ground in April, about this time of year. And he's now 17. The mother's 32. As we were speaking earlier with Mr. Thomas here, anybody here know what 360 bales of hay looks like? It's, you know, it's nasty, and I do pay somebody to stick it in the garage. A bunch of young kids are hard to find anymore to do it. But once you do that, and you've got two horses with a 12-by-12 stall, that's 144 per stall. That's, you know, you can look at that for almost 300 square feet. I got a little tack room with the saddle in. It's 14 by 16. It's all tied in together. And then, of course, I got my dumb cars, as she said. My cars ain't eating nothing. They're just sitting there. But I got an old '79 Z28 that I keep in my garage that I built back in 2006. There's my tractor that I work with, my lawnmower. I got a little ATV, you know. You could say I was a sport brat, but you know, I don't.
Your three minutes, your three minutes is up.
Can you wrap it up?
I can wrap it up. I don't have enough, I don't have enough, and if you look at my place, it looks like Busch Gardens. I don't have enough there, and I feel that it's plain-out unconstitutional, you know, period. That's the best word I can put in there. And I appreciate y'all giving me a chance to speak today.
Thank you. I think we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for the proposed amendments. And then we can, I'll turn it back over to the chairman, and we can have any more discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any commissioners have any other comments or further discussions?
Mr. Chair, having been in the consulting business beforehand, I have witnessed in other jurisdictions where single-family lots have become overwhelmed with accessory structures on it. In fact, I can point one out right now that there's no less than five accessory structures in one principal structure on 1/3-acre lot. And each of those accessory structures are 8 by 10 or greater. And I can see where that can really ruin the atmosphere of a residential neighborhood. In fact, the location of this is not residentially used anymore. It's used as a lawyer office. I can also see having a little broad, broader uh, ability for the bona fide farming operation to erect the structures they find necessary in their operation as a bona fide farm, not a pretend farm. So, generally, I don't have a real issue with ordinance. I think it's been well-written and thought out and examples have been used to help identify some control needs, yet some allowances. So, I'm willing to support it as written and let the, let the tide run for a little bit and see what comes up in the next couple of years to see if we need to be a little more lenient or a little more stricter as we move towards the zoning ordinance rewrite.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Mr. Bennett asked, he, in his statement, he said, what is a, could you explain to all of us, including the audience that's listening on YouTube, what is a pretend farm? We need to know the answer to that.
Pretend farm is a farm that, that operates, it looks like a farm, but there's no revenue generated as from farming operations. There's no revenue that generated from farming operations. That's a pretend farm, in my book.
Okay. Because as we're up on a farm, there was not any revenue um, uh, generated from it, but it was a bona fide farm because there were all sorts of animals there and we use our farm to feed the family. So, we had horses, we had mules, we had cows, we had pigs, but we did not sell. We used that farm to feed family members. So, I don't, I don't understand um, your, I don't understand that. Because you can't have a farm without having money generated from the farm and use it as a business. I, I think that's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I would like to see us make some kind of exception for farming. Uh, I came to New Kent almost fifty years ago. There were a lot more farmers then than we have now and it's declining. Uh, and, and farming is one of the things that identifies us as a rural community. And I would certainly like to see some kind of uh, exception in that. I do agree with your proposal uh, to try to address some of these things in the zoning amendment, uh, but I think that's an area that we certainly need to look at.
Thank you, Ramona. Um, and again, my, my opinion too, it's, again, I think it, the proposed, uh, the correct, the ordinance, proposed ordinance does show some improvements as far as size or the ability to um, you know, it, we haven't regressed and, and at least in my opinion as far as the, what a person or persons can do on a parcel or property, which is good. I think it's a little less restrictive now. Um, but again, I think most of it is better suited for those maybe, again, who don't have, have that need for larger pieces or larger um, buildings such as a farmer. Um, you know, and then personally, I think that the, you know, the ten thousand square foot, even though there's a means of approving that upon request, um, and again, and that those, the request does certainly cost money to um, to, to do that and um, and also too, the, there is a drawback too. It's, they would have to apply for a, effectively a zoning permit, but they don't have to apply for a building permit if it's a, again, if it's a, if it's an agricultural building under the building code, which is they're exempt um, from building permits. Um, so we'd have to, we'd have to catch it on the backend, I guess, in a way, and if they don't apply for that zoning permit or the um, request, or the ex- or the exception to the request. Um, personally, I'd be, I'd be amenable if, you know, and again, I'm, I'm just throwing an arbitrary figure out because I don't know what, and appropriate, not having done a study and I don't know um, too, if how many existing farms today are going to be deemed, you know, legally not compliant because they exceed that square footage or, or number of buildings um, as, as a farm. Um, so I'm, I'm kinda thinking if we increase that square footage allowance, that may be, it may be a suitable response and, and, and in my opinion, that's just my opinion at this point. But um, the rest of the revisions, I'm, you know, I'm pretty settled with. I think, you know, again, I think we haven't regressed in allowing people to do what they want to do generally on their, on their lots, but at the same time, I do think we should, um, again, we all want our community to look good, the best, the best it can look. Of course, it's always subjective as far as what looks good to one person may not to another, but um, so a little bit of each is on, but at the same time, uh.
Chairman, who are you thinking in terms of increase?
Again, not having to, you know, and I almost, I almost played on the safe side because I, and again, and being familiar with farmers, having been on the farm all my life, growing up on the farm, um, and, and my, all our neighbors are farmers, you know, we, we don't have, and I live in Barrensville, we don't have, uh, I don't live in a subdivision, um, you know, you have a, you have a field and a neighbor, a field and a neighbor, a field and a neighbor. Um, so, um, and odds are, they're related to you, the ones closest. Um, so, I don't know tw- if twenty thousand square feet would be out of the question, again, because I, I don't believe, I've never seen a farmer build anything because farmers tend to be a bit frugal to begin with. I don't think they're going to build something that's going to go beyond what their, you know, they're, they're not going to, usually what you find on farms, it's you, you see a basic building, then the add-ons. Um, so, it's not, you know, they're not going to build, overbuild on the front end. They build as they need. Um, and, and I guess too, another question is if, um, in addition to a building, is that an accessory structure? Or is that, so, let's say, for example, you have one accessory structure, let's say, let's call it a shed or a barn, and the farmer needs to expand but decides to not build a separate building or detach from that accessory structure, but adds to that accessory structure? Is it, is that adding to the number of accessory structures? It only, or does it only add to the square footage?
Just the square footage.
Right. Um, so, so again, my thoughts, uh, I would not be opposed to see an increased square footage on, on bona fide farm structures. And I do consider sustenance farming a bona fide farming operation. I mean, living, living on your, you know, with your own crops and your own, even though we don't see that many, uh, I think, true sustenance farmers around anymore, certainly not this part of the country, but there are, are parts that, you know, that does, it does exist, um, certainly. Um, you know, and then, and it's beyond having that large garden that we all love to have. It's, you know, but I do, uh, do agree with Ms. Thomas that you, you know, I don't think uh, it diminishes the fact that it's a farm, so.
Mr. Davis, are you suggesting that the uh, maximum square footage go to twenty thousand? But how about the percentage of area? It, do you, are you suggesting a change there?
I have not done any math yet. This is very contemporaneous right at this point.
Twen- twenty thou- twenty thousand, eh, if you kept the five percent, would, would take it to about eight point two acres.
So, so, and we're dealing with twenty acre parcels or less, correct?
That's only for the number of structures. So, to give an idea, the very first slide that I showed, fifteen acres, uh, five percent of that is twenty-nine thousand eighty-four and a half. Um, so, but then the other section of that would be if you're twenty acres or less, eight structures. So, you're also making a recommendation to that portion as well?
Yeah, and, and my, my concern, again, based on, on what I've known about farmers is that, in, in, in New Kent and Virginia, we don't have large farms. You know, we don't have thousands of acres at any one spot anymore, um, and, and rarely did. And I think um, the larger farms, if you have a two, three, four hundred acre farm, I don't think it's, will have the same impact, but it, I do, I have seen uh, farming operations operate from those smaller parcels. Again, it may be twenty acres, maybe thirty acres, or maybe ten. Um, so there, but this farming operations size could stay the same for somebody on a twenty acre parcel as it is on a two hundred acre parcel. They still farm a certain number of acreage, for example, and need so many tractors, so many planters and so on and so forth. And the, the room it takes to house those, um, that same equipment is going to be the same whether it's on twenty acres or two hundred acres. They, they just, farmers just travel to the fields they need to go to and they may not own those fields, they just, they rent those fields. Um, so, uh, again, I, I feel like I, I have seen this and, and grown up with this a little bit, so, um, so maybe I'm just, maybe too biased on it, but.
No, I, I appreciate it. Is, so, taking that feedback um, from you all, um, the second portion of that, so you've got the first section, which is five percent or ten thousand. So, if there's the recommendation to increase it to twenty percent, as Mr. Bennett mentioned, do we leave it at five percent, but twenty percent, or twenty thousand, you know, have to play with numbers to figure out what that's going to be on these larger, or um, excuse me, parcels, but the second portion of that is the acreage and number. Do we keep that or do we take, just strike it and the, the, yeah?
Honestly, I'm probably more interested in the, in the square footage allowed than the number of buildings that it takes to get to that point, uh, on a, and again, on a farm. Um, again, different farms are set up differently. You may be able to accommodate, um, if you have livestock, for example, you may have five different buildings to accommodate, or barns to accommodate whatever, whatever you're raising, um, to whereas a grain farmer, for example, may require fewer buildings because the only thing they're housing is equipment, uh, trucks and tractors and combines.
Can I say this? We can do that, but I thought that's what we did for BZA. We can just, oh, so take that mind process and move it up to.
So, the uh, feedback that I just received from Mr. Everard was um, taking that exception, um, more than likely the verbiage that we had in the BZA ordinance and moving it to this section where there's that exception for the farmers where they wouldn't have that cap at all. Um, we're trying to think of a way that, because not all A-one properties are just farms, so we have those single-family, how do we work together with both of these? Um, we can gladly take that exception, uh, or the administrative modification language for the bona fide farming operations and move it to this section here, and then they would not be limited to the square footage nor the number of structures, if that would be amenable.
You said acreage, two?
So, the whole thing, yes.
Okay, okay. And clarify for me again, you, um, bona fide.
So, you would need to be licensed as a farming operation uh, through the state USDA. Um, we would check with the business license just to make sure that that farm, the property does have a legitimate farming operation.
Okay.
Um, so, for example, if I had a property in A-one and I was just gardening and farming um, just for me, but not licensed as a bona fide farmer, it wouldn't count.
Okay.
Um, so we could take the language from the BZA section that states for bona fide farming operations, uh, we could amend that language to say they're exempt from that section of the ordinance.
So, my question now is, because I, I don't, it's all of a sudden, this bona fide thing is coming up, um, and I want to be sure that it gets clar- um, I get some clarity around it tonight, uh, for people who, who has horses on their property currently and they don't have what you call a bona fide farming operation. For example, me, I have lean-to's on, yeah, lean-to's that the horses go under to get shade while they're out. Um, it's three of them there. Um, it's an eleven stall, no, twelve stall horse barn there. Um, we, because I, I'm not understanding how the bona fide now comes into play when all of these things, I have all of these things for farming purposes and now, I don't understand that.
Yeah, so there is a, I'm sorry.
Ms. Left, and I think too, another gauge for farms is that, I know with the AFD program, that you determine what's eligible for AFD purposes, correct? And there's a way to verify that, and then I would imagine this would be a similar avenue to verify that what, what a farm is bona fide or, or not.
Yeah, so that's where staff had determined, um, making sure that the farms are registered uh, and licensed. So, for example, um, some homeowner could have their own chickens, livestock, um, and horses, but they, it's for their personal enjoyment and use, their, you know, purposes of feeding, but they're, they're not doing, and maybe Mr. Davis can help me with what I'm trying to say, they're not licensed as a operating farm to take those livestock and those animals and that produce that's being developed and raised on that property and selling it at farmer's markets or selling it um, at the, the grocery store. Um, there might be a little bit more to the farming term that I, I, I might be missing here, Mr. Davis, but we have animal husbandry in our ordinance that allows for properties to have their own personal animals for their own personal use, whether it's, um, as you had mentioned, to feed your family and to raise and care for your personal enjoyment, but it's not being used in a way to provide for others in the community. Um, so, trying to find a balance between an actual operating farm that's licensed for the purposes of creating revenue and then just the homeowner and the property owner having those animals and um, operations for their own personal enjoyment, um, that's where we drew the line at because we do have that animal husbandry that's allowed without needing to be licensed.
Any other comments?
But if we, if we allow the animal husbandry in the agricultural designation, and we're, and we're not putting any, any restrictions on that animal husbandry, then how can we put restrictions on, on, on the, on the number of buil- number of buildings and square feet in, in, in a, on a rural, larger rural property? I just, I, 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 I get what, what Kurtis, I get what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you.
I think at this point, uh, we've gotten a lot of feedback. I don't feel like the commissioners are sold on the way that it's currently presented. Um, I would suggest potentially deferring this for a later date. Let staff look at it further and come up with potential changes uh, to, you know, present again at a future public hearing. Um, I think we're kind of going around and around here and I don't think that we're going to find a resolution tonight, um, so I would like to suggest potentially deferring uh, to a future date.
Commissioners, gonna get a motion?
I have a comment. Uh, the code of Virginia gives a very clear definition of farm. It also gives you a definition of bona fide and it gives you examples of that, so, in, in the review process, take into account what the code says.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, like it, um, if no more discussion on this, is there a, a motion before us?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to defer this until our next meeting.
We have a motion to defer, um, Mr. Ryder, can you pull it, commissioners?
Mr. Laudershell?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Abstain.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Uh, motion to defer carries, um, so we'll revisit this on a later date. Next is the chairman's report. Um, don't have much to offer tonight, except I will, I do want to appreciate all the work that's been done to the, uh, can't speak now, comprehensive plan update, uh, especially the committee members for their input and hard work. Um, I also thank Mr. Araga and his staff for all the work they've done to this point, especially because we also had a transition in staff uh, during this timeframe too. Um, so it took, it took a bit of adjustment on everybody's part. Um, also, my fellow commissioners are for the input. Also, my fellow commissioners are for the input, especially Mr. Bennett, Ms. Rose, who also served on the, uh, committee, and of course, the Mr. Gordon and EPR staff. So, I look forward to the board's consideration, I guess, now in the schedule before the June meeting. And outside of that, I have nothing else to comment on. Reverend Hathaway, you have a plan RBA report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In light of the hour, I will condense it. Plan RBA, we've had, had a number of meetings since our last planning commission meeting. Uh, two significant things that have come out. Uh, I sit on the C-TAC, which is Community Transportation Advisory Committee Equity Work Group, and one of the things we've been concerned about is the attendance on that. Uh, and, and so, we've come up with a two-part plan. Part one is an attendance policy that says that if a person misses two consecutive meetings, then that will generate a conversation with the appointing, uh, organization. And we take, we took it off of staff and said that C-TAC chair would make that contact. If they missed three, uh, meetings in a year, then we would ask for an appointment of someone else. Now, part two of it, I sit on the Equity Work Group, and we've, we've tried to look at some of the reasons that people don't come to those meetings, and if you are paid to come, then they generally come. But a lot of those persons are volunteers and are not paid. And so, we come up with a, uh, equity reimbursement policy. Uh, the executive committee has approved it. It's a one-year trial base that would pay a person who is not being compensated in the other way fifty dollars to attend the meeting, and they would be paid on a quarterly basis. Now, it's a trial base. I'll tell you, there's a lot of discussion about it, but it passed overwhelmingly, that we would do it for, for a test for one year. That's, that's the biggie. We've had a lot of meetings, but that's the big thing on that. I would like to give you something on the housing, because I do represent the commission on housing. Same thing, we've had a number of meetings. I think what the housing committee has, has determined is that we don't want to center the board a gigantic list of recommendations, and so, we've been going through the process of trying to narrow that list and prioritize them. We have a meeting this Wednesday, which should help us get to the final number that we'd like to present to the, uh, board supervisors. So, I'll keep you updated with that.
Thank you, Reverend.
Sure.
All right, now with, uh, individual commissioner reports, Mr. LaRochelle?
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
No, sir.
Ms. Johnson?
Hello, everybody.
Reverend, anything else to add?
Uh, yes, I do. The, uh, National Day of Prayer will be on Thursday, May first, and it's right in front of the county administration building. We're excited about it. We've got real community to support. The, uh, high school ROTC is coming to participate, and some of the students, so I'd encourage anyone who can to come. It starts promptly at twelve and ends by twelve-thirty. It's a thirty-minute, because we want people to do it on their lunch. Uh, the last thing is New Kent Faith in Blue. Normally, we have an event in October. Uh, we've moved that to September, and it will be at the Quentin Elementary School, uh, and we are going to have a Faith in Blue breakfast for the deputies, and we're only for the clergy and deputies, okay? But it, it just shows that our commitment is to build that partnership.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Schmidt?
Nothing.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir. It's not regarding anything on land use, but I attended and going to be attending the Sheriff's Academy for the next several weeks, and let me tell you folks, these ladies and gentlemen of the Sheriff Department have nothing but your best interests in mind. They were completely open. The discussion was the whole gamut, from arrests through, through assignment of jails, jail fees, ride-alongs, all that kind of stuff, and I, it was a completely eye-opening experience. I cannot recommend it more highly, because these individuals are truly in love with New Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Ms. Rose?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Gomorrah?
Well, the Patrick Henry, um, event is happening May third and fourth, um, from, I believe it's ten to four, uh, where there will be a Patrick Henry, um, redoing his comments, um, at that time, and that's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of that, um, leading up to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of, uh, the United States. That's it.
Thanks, sir. The next planning commission meeting will be on Monday, May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, six-thirty here in the boardroom. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Right at nine o'clock.